This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Thanks. So we are being, this session hosted by the East Hampton Housing Coalition and the East Hampton Democratic Committee is being live broadcast on East Hampton Media's channel 193 and also recorded for playback later. So thanks for joining us. If you didn't sign in when you came in, there is a sign-in sheet if you'd like to sign in. I want to just go over a couple of points of information for folks before we get started. One is those of you who are on City Council already know this, but for East Hampton Media to be able to pick up the audio, make sure you're actually speaking into the mics. Councilor Gomez, the mics are still on, yes? Okay, great. Let's see. I'm going to, so we decided to start by asking our candidates. So everyone on this panel is actually up for election for City Council. Not all races are competitive at this moment, and that's fine. But we did want to hear from everybody a little bit about your views on housing. So everyone was given a question. So we're going to ask you to introduce yourself, and I'll actually say whoever one is first. And then the question was, what do you see as the biggest issues for housing in the community? So on our panel, we have Councilor Brad Riley, who's an incumbent, Councilor Connie Denham, incumbent, both are councilors-at-large, Councilor Tom Peak from Precinct 2, 3, I knew that, Councilor Omar Gomez, who's City Council President from Precinct 2, and then Tamara Smith and Jared Hinkle, who are both candidates running for the open seat in Precinct 5. So thanks for joining us. We're going to give you three minutes. I'm going to keep track of time, and I like to be prepared. So I'm going to give you the 1 minute 30 seconds and then stop, okay, so that we keep everyone honest over here. Do you, I'll sit in the front, and you can carry on?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. To start, we'll have Jared Hinkle.
Green light means on, right?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Perfect.
Good evening, everybody in East Hampton. My name is Jared Hinkle. My wife and my family have lived here for 14 years. Before that, we actually rented a town home in North Hampton that was under a trust that helped us with paying for rent. Because as a young family, you know, it's really hard to start out. And through the years, living in North Hampton, my wife and I said, you know what, we're paying someone $1,400 a month, and that was affordable housing 14 years ago for a three-bedroom townhouse in North Hampton. And we're like, you know what, we're going to bite the bullet, we're going to tighten our buckles, and we're going to own a house. So a couple of years with doing all that, we saved enough money. Fortunately for me, I'm a veteran of the US military, served in Iraq, and I had the honor to use my VA home loan, which it's a great program. I know there's other programs out there, like the First Time Home Buyers, but the VA actually helped me 100% to get a house. We looked all around Western Mass because we wanted to stay around here, because our oldest daughter required a special school because she's hearing impaired. So we wanted to stay around here. So we looked in Belcher Town, we looked West Springfield, we looked everywhere. And then we, our realtor took us to our current house in East Hampton. We fell in love with it. We did some research on East Hampton. School district's great, great community, great parks, you know. It was just what we wanted to do to raise our family. Within the past 14 years, I've seen the house prices basically triple. What I paid for my house 14 years ago, what I can sell for now, it's almost tripled. You know, inflation is a big thing, you know, demand for housing is a big thing. I believe for affordable housing, we need to get developers in here to actually say, okay, you know, we can do duplexes, we can do multifamily homes, and stuff like that. And if they need a little tax break on something, I think the town should let them, you know, just to get, have the families the opportunities to live in a community like East Hampton, which is a great community. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll have Tamara Smith.
Okay, thank you. My name is Tamara Smith, and I'm running for City Councilor in Precinct 5. And Jared and I live in the same neighborhood, and my housing story is very similar to yours. We had our house, we were able to purchase it because of my spouse's service, and we were able to get a VA loan as well. I don't know that we would be able to afford that house today, because inflation, housing costs in our, in the plains particularly, has skyrocketed. When I first moved in, the average price was around $150,000 in our neighborhood, and now we have some houses in our neighborhood that are selling for over $500,000. What really makes me concerned about this is the vast income disparity that now exists across our city without a lot of talk about it. In my precinct, I know we have lifelong residents who are very proud of the land that they own, and really want to remain there for the rest of their lives. They're being priced out of our neighborhood because they can't afford a lot of the taxes within our district, district meaning precinct, excuse me. The next thing I was going to say, when you look at what is driving that cost, these are all great things that we have all voted for and wanted. We have new schools in our district, and because of that, people are moving to East Hampton a lot more. We have thriving businesses in East Hampton, and everybody wants to live here right now. But we're also at a point where we're running out of room, and particularly in Precinct 5, which is closest to the aquifer. We have to be very smart about development. We are really the precinct that is most responsible for the aquifer in our daily activities, because we could actually pollute the aquifer. So that is very much of my mind. Anytime I see any development within our precinct, I get very worried about that. There are some sustainable options for housing in the future, particularly in a neighborhood where we see so many people who are aging in place. They don't want to leave their home, but they may not be able to keep it up in the same way. I've seen many groups that have risen out of the pandemic. One of these I'm on the board for is East Hampton neighbors, where it's a grassroots efforts to really try to create a safety net in places where we don't have safety nets that are currently evolved for people to be able to maintain their independence. So I think that our aging population and becoming overhoused, our younger population not being able to move into East Hampton, and our older population not being able to stay in East Hampton are very important topics, particularly in our precinct. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Councilor Omar Gomez, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Omar Gomez. I represent Precinct 2 for reelection. This is going to be my fourth term. My first term was in 2017, when I got elected as the first Latino. I always have to say that, because I'm still the only one, and we should have more. We moved, I say we, me and my wife and my three girls, we moved to East Hampton in 2007. Why East Hampton? Because by then, it was affordable. And that's why we should see something. We look everywhere, and East Hampton was the place that we can afford to buy a house. And that's our goal as a councilor. I will say our goal, because locally, the governor is on the same page as housing, housing, housing. The mayor, you read the paper a few months ago, she said housing, housing, housing. And I'm pretty sure the councilors there, and my left, they're already elected, they're on the same page. We have to understand our role as a councilor. We can be really proactive, but our role is basically to create ordinance, zoning ordinance, where we're allowed to create developers to create more housing. Those ordinance can be creative. That way, we can protect the, we can conserve the land. We have to protect the land. At the same time, we have to be aware that not a lot of people are willing to pay high prices for housing. It is a lot of concerns every time that we use affordable housing. People shouldn't be afraid. Even we shouldn't be afraid to say low-income housing. I hear so many times people talking about, we don't want those people here. You know what? I want that people here, because everybody is welcome in our community. And we're going to do everything in our power to make that people to come to our city, because we need it. One of our biggest problems, and I'm glad that Tamara said it, is 1 minute 30 seconds. I'm really glad that Tamara said it, because we don't have a lot of space in East Hampton. It's really important that we have to know and knowledge that we don't have that space, right? So we have to be creative. How we can be creative? We have now the opportunity to bring housing for the three old schools that are vacant, right? And, but at the same time, we need to create those three buildings, we can bring variety of people with the different incomes that we can, that we can welcome in our community. Again, I'm really open to have more housing in East Hampton. We need it. And I think we should be working forward to creating more opportunities for the people to move to East Hampton.
Thank you. Next, Councilor Tom Peak.
Thank you. Thanks for having me, everybody. I was going to have this whole thing prepared about how I moved to East Hampton, because it was affordable, and now if I were trying today, I probably couldn't even afford to buy my own house. But they all basically said that better than me, so I'm going to skip that whole thing and go to the question at hand, which is like, what do I think are the major problems facing this, sort of the city? I think the one thing that's important to clarify in my mind is that this isn't an East Hampton-specific problem, and I have to remember that often, because I ran on a platform of housing six years ago. I've done, I think, a lot in the housing area. I've passed a number of zoning reforms, I've supported a number of other things, and yet things have just gotten worse, right? So there's points where if this was an East Hampton-specific problem, I think you could pretty fairly label me a failure and vote me out of office. I just, I did have, it's just gotten worse. I think broadly, in a lot of America, definitely in Massachusetts, and particularly here in the valley, you've got a blend of some demographic features, an aging population, millennials moving into the age where they would like to own their own homes, mixed with a handful of things, you know, LCs and big corporations buying up homes for rentals and Airbnb, you know, things like that that are constricting supply, a few other factors that are, you know, student loans coming in here. But due to a number of things, there's just massively more people who want to buy or rent housing than there are available units to buy or rent. In addition, out of the new stuff that is being produced, given that constrained environment, developers really have no incentive, barring public intervention, to do anything other than build housing units for the people who would pay the highest amount for them. These aren't charities. And so with all of that, it's a really complex situation, because you have a mixture of different constituencies. I'm very sad, because a lot of my friends who are my age who would like to buy houses won't even consider East Hampton, because there's nothing here, not a single thing that's within their range. They're never going to be my neighbors. That makes me sad. But that's a different set of people who have different valid, important needs than like the folks I know who are on waiting lists to try and get into our housing authority properties. They can be on those wait lists for years. If I'm talking about next year, what I would like to do, I'd say I really want the city to have a better relationship with the housing authority. I want that housing authority to be more functional, because I don't think this is a problem that can be solved strictly through the market. I do think there has to be some public interventions, because there's people who are not going to be able to afford housing at any price, including large parts of our aging population and an anticipated wave of climate refugees. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Councilor Connie Denham.
Great. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here and for those who are watching. I think it's really important to contextualize why this issue is important to me. I grew up in a family with a single parent, and my mom relied very much on my grandparents to help with the purchase of our house, and she struggled with that. She worked minimum wage jobs. And when I was 18 years old, she got cancer. And I will never forget the day she came running into my room, my room, to tell me to be quiet, be quiet, be quiet. And the electric company came to shut off our electricity. And I've tried to understand housing issues. I've also worked in a homeless shelter to try to understand people's circumstances of why these things happen, right? And I think about, when I think about East Hampton, right, people have said, and I'm sorry to repeat it, but you know, we have a large aging population in our community. We're a very desirable area within the state to live. As Councilor Peak mentioned, you know, climate refugees, we're going to have people moving off the coast as climate change impacts our coastlines, which is going to greater impact our affordability of housing. And like others, I moved here 11 years ago, and we came just at the tail ends of kind of the buyer's market, if you will. And we were very lucky to be able to live here, right? And so you have a lot of people who don't have the resources to be able to purchase homes here at this particular time. And so I think that that's something that's very difficult to watch and to see people try to live in this community and not be able to. I think something that is very important to understand about the region itself is that, you know, we have over 200,000 renters in the valley, and 26% of those renters, 50% of them use, 26% of them use 50% of their income to be able to pay for rent, which I think is a travesty, right? You have people of color who make up the largest percentage of people without homes, which is also a significant issue. Our homeless rate is increasing, our people who are unsheltered is increasing in this particular area, and our eviction rates, right? And so all of these things are in fact growing. But I think it's important to understand why are those things happening, right? You have a system that actually, it's not, it's not so much about supply and demand, right? It's a system that actually supports landlords. It's a system that supports development, right? So development often goes towards being able to support people who are interested in higher income and purchasing property. And so I think those are some of the things that impact that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Councilor Brad Riley.
All right. Thank you. Hi, everybody. Brad Riley here. You know, the issue of housing is, you know, interwoven throughout my entire life. You know, when I was a child, I grew up housing insecure, moved to multiple school districts throughout my youth, and had a single mother who could rarely afford to pay rent. I've lived in homeless shelters, I've lived outside in the winter. And, you know, it was nonprofit organizations that saved me in my youth. And so, you know, it sort of became my mission as an adult to start working in nonprofit organizations, so working in transitional housing programs for survivors of sexual and domestic violence, for families, for LGBTQ youth. And, you know, there's this element of doing that kind of work that's very difficult in the day-to-day to maintain your own mental health and well-being. And, you know, so there was, there was always this nagging thing in my soul, how do I still do this but keep myself intact? And, you know, I think I sort of just ended up being blessed at the worst possible time, when the pandemic started, that there was no work available. And so I decided to volunteer for the city of East Hampton. I joined the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership, and I quickly learned this is actually stuff that I can do that's impactful, it's meaningful, and it can produce change for people who grew up like I did, without having to be so close to the fire that your soul gets burned doing the work. And, you know, so I got my master's in public policy and administration, and then ran for City Council. You know, in the time that I've been working with the city, you know, so I had the work that I did on the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership, and then also, you know, served on the School of Reuse Committee to develop the proposal for the new schools that will be turned into affordable housing. So this is like, you know, I've put my whole life into this. You know, to answer the question about what I think the most pressing issue is for housing for East Hampton, is it's actually not the forces within East Hampton itself, it's the forces at the state level in Massachusetts and at the federal level. So we have a housing department at the state level that does not care about local community issues. They don't care about poverty alleviation in the ways that we think that's meaningful. And housing and urban development applies principles of policy that affect the most people at one time as possible, without actually taking things like social equity into consideration. East Hampton is one of those communities that fails the social equity challenge for HUD. Thank you.
Thank you. It's clear that there's been a lot of thought put into those answers, so I appreciate that. And I want to thank you guys all again for making the time to come to this forum. And same, I'd like to extend the thank you to everyone who made it here in person and also virtually.
Do we have a statement from Councilor Zerit?
Yeah. So just to note for everyone, there were a few city councilors and candidates that weren't able to make it tonight. Councilor Zerit can't be here, Councilor JP Kuzinski can't be here. And, yeah, Councilor Derby also can't be here, because he's traveling. I have responses from Councilor Zerit on the specific questions that we've prepared. And I'm sure that if anyone else has other questions, that he would be more than happy to reach out as well as the other, or he would be happy to answer them if you reach out, as well as the other City Council candidates. And just to keep moving, I prepared a slide deck with some data around the housing in East Hampton, just to preface the conversation around sort of what's actually happening on the ground. And it definitely confirms some of the stories that the councilors and candidates shared. So to start, if you look at the screen over there, you can see the population change in East Hampton. It's been pretty, or it's leveled off since 1980, pretty much. And actually, the census projected a 1.1% loss in population from 2020 to 2022. And obviously, there's more data to come on that in the next couple of years. And then on the right here, you can see the housing tenure makeup. So on the top, you have 62% people who are owner-occupied and 37.9% of people who are renter-occupied. And this is all data from the Mass Housing, Mass Housing Project, and they're also all available on the census website. And you can see here, this is school-aged children by enrollment type, and there's just a general slow decline there. Actually, a study commissioned by the city found that production of housing, particularly three-plus-bedroom housing, will help to maintain that consistent school enrollment. If you want to see that presentation, the May 23 of this year. Yeah, so here is a percentage of households that are cost-burdened. So this means that the light blue is households that are paying over 30% of their income on rent or housing, and the dark blue is over 50%. So you can see, like, you know, almost a third is over 30%, which is pretty alarming. And then the owner households, it's over a quarter. And yeah, I'm sure Councilor Peak is aware of this report. But this is a report released earlier in 2022 by the Donahue Institute from UMass Amherst. And just some of the highlights here is that more than half of renter households in the Pioneer Valley are housing cost-burned, and that's the 30% or more. There's a critical need across the Pioneer Valley for about 13,000, or 17,300 apartments and other rental units of all sizes that cost less than 500 per month. So that's aiming at that low and very low income levels. And then, yeah, households of all income levels are having trouble finding housing in the Pioneer Valley, like the candidates mentioned. This is a chart showing the number of active listings. You can see just in general, there aren't a lot of houses in East Hampton.
Do you have a slide game, please?
Yeah.
So what they're saying is, is that right now, there's somewhere 731 units available.
Yeah. And that's across the Pioneer Valley in September 2021.
Okay, of course. Is there any information on how many people are looking?
I'm not entirely sure. Did you? No? Okay.
I wish there was. There's not.
So yeah, you can see in this graph that most of our housing is single-family detached, and that a lot of it was built pre-2010. You can see, like, post-2010, there's very little construction. This shows the home prices over time. Thought that's just an interesting statistic to keep in mind. But again, everyone sort of knows this when you're looking around. And yeah, this is an illustration of that statistic before about the gap in housing units projected for 2025. And yeah, that's the rest of the data. I wanted to bring your attention to the recent legislative development, the Housing Bond Bill that was just signed by the governor. These are just some highlights from the Western Mass Network to End Homelessness. It invested 1.6 billion to repair and rehabilitate public housing, 800 million to create and preserve affordable housing, oh, 200 million for rental SROs and permanent supportive housing, and yeah, creation of a flexible supporting, supportive housing pool program to provide critical assistance to supportive housing. And yeah, special thanks to the Mass Housing Partnership, UMass Donahue Institute, and the Western Mass Network to End Homelessness for all of the data and graphics. And thank you all for listening to me rant.
Are we taking a quick break?
Yeah, we will take.
Do we have cards to hand out to folks for questions?
Yeah, let's take a five-minute break. So we'll come back at 7:35. And Shira over here has index cards to hand out, in case you guys have any individual questions you want to ask the councilors. We have some pre-made questions that we brought, but if you guys have anything specific based on their statements, you'll go ahead, write it there.
Let's, yeah, we'll start with five and see how it goes.
Yeah. We're running ahead of schedule, so.
Yes.
I felt like I just started talking, and then I saw the group. I just saw stop.
Stop chewing my words.
Yeah, make all the quiet.
I put it aside, I put it aside. I'm like, oh, I don't have time.
For a second.
Right.
Just about, yeah.
You don't use your hands, personally?
You don't use your hands, personally?
You start warming up, and you want to get to say so many stuff, this one, 30 seconds. Okay, now I'm losing everything, what a thing.
Yeah, it throws you off.
Yes.
I have a ring, so I don't want to.
Yeah, stop. Okay, I'll stop.
I don't have.
You still have your, you still have yours?
I doubt it.
Okay.
They might even have given it to him. Take this one.
Something is still here.
Oh, performers?
Councilor, yeah.
Laura Scott.
What?
Jonathan.
Mm-hmm. Oh, there might be questions there, too.
Yeah.
Well, newlywed, it was amusing to watch you play with your brain.
What's that?
It was amusing to watch you doing like.
Man, it's, I'm a fidgeter.
Yeah.
Kelsey gets so mad at me because I'll grab like a hair clip of hers and just like drill it through my hands and then just set it down. So she was like, this is great. You have like a thing.
It's so true.
And mine has like a texture to it. So there's like.
Oh, yeah.
That too. So yeah, it's kind of, I'm still getting used to it.
Oh, and the clank when you.
Yeah.
That's always weird, too. But congratulations. It looks like it was a great celebration.
It was a blast. I'm so tired.
I still can't believe that, like, you married my student.
Yeah, it was so funny when I first ran.
Yeah.
Oh, hey.
She was like one of my favorite students. So it really, I mean, it's going way, way, way back.
I went in my room that like, this is an exciting rap.
Good person.
She'd go to school and get in front of everyone. And they're like, you can go.
Did you collect some questions?
Well, UMass is a little misleading that way with all their fees.
Well, yeah, they got all the fees. Although, it's a little better.
I don't know. How much were they paying before for fees?
Because I'm, well, I can say this with my, with my grad program.
Okay, grad programs, I would assume are a little different.
Because yeah, she wanted to go, like, because I think a lot of the fees are like, oh, there's other things, too.
We had, well, my son James goes to UMass, and aside from the housing, and aside from tuition, we also pay $11,000 a piece a year, which are like for the computers and like for the lights to go on and all that stuff. Whereas the state was supposed to not have any, they were, they froze tuition.
Right.
But kept having the fees go.
Yeah, totally. And that was my experience, too, is I went like tuition free.
Yeah.
But then, when I went to high school, the way that everyone talked me through it was that I wasn't going to pay anything. So I was kind of like, okay, neat. And now I'm like, I'm, I'm now like, kind of wondering how that's actually going to work. Because the person keeps sending me bills and they not have trusted for the fact that I'm a child student, like an employee. So I'm like, no, that's wrong. Send me a new one.
Well, you have to, do you have an actual tuition waiver or anything?
Yeah, I sent it to them. They've, I don't know. I think I'm worried that somewhere it's going to be.
I hope not.
Yeah, they send me emails, but you need to pay this, and you pay it when you manage it.
Yeah.
Now I don't have to worry about the.
There's no bad, the only bad questions are the ones that go on.
When did you register?
I like this question.
I need to say someone now.
That'll get their attention.
They immediately like, okay, okay.
I've done, I did that as another.
Want to start there some steps.
I'm just, I'm trying to keep my powder dry for what I really need. So I'm trying to be like, very polite.
Oh, we can do this.
Yelling guy until.
I understand that.
I really try to be yelling by like less than once a year. So that when I, when people pay a lot of attention.
They can really, really soon.
Yeah.
I wonder like, if this is asking, like, are you saying that we should just answer this?
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
I wouldn't have been.
I said, you're my vice chair.
Were you there?
I was good.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
Pride, I see.
I don't know what they put in that, but I go there at least twice a day.
I have comeies on my way to work.
If I don't know about these things, then who else?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I find out because Nicole told me. I was like, when?
Well, you should probably get that information out there somewhere.
That's what I said, when?
I'm going to regret that going.
Oh, the company's.
No, I think we just can move it out there.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, let's come back together. All the candidates are back. Excellent. Thanks. So one of the questions we got, thanks for folks in the audience giving us questions. Is there still one outstanding, perhaps? If there's still one that you're thinking about, just raise your hand when you're done. Okay. If anyone has another question, raise your hand and Shira will come around and bring you a card and we'll collect some more. But this one, actually, Kayam and I decided we could just answer. I mean, you all can give it a try if you want to, but this is, so full disclosure, I'm the chair of the East Hampton Dems, but I've also been on East Hampton's Fair and Affordable Housing Partnership since forever, like 15 years. So I feel confident answering this question. And Kayam, who's on the Housing Coalition, has also been on the Fair and Affordable Housing Partnership for a very long time. So the question is, can you explain more about affordable housing and low income housing? And this is an awesome question, and thank you to whoever asked it. And I think the way I would explain it, I think about affordable housing in two different ways. One is with a capital A and the other's with a small a. So we like to imagine that everyone in the community has access to fair, affordable, safe, appropriate housing. And when we say affordable with that small a, what we mean is that people aren't cost burdened, like in that slide that we showed you earlier. So being cost burdened in housing means that you're spending more than 30% of your gross income on your housing, and that includes your utilities as well. So for a household that's spending more than that, we think of them as housing cost burdened. So that's affordable housing with a small a. So we want everyone to be able to live within those means. When we use affordable with a capital A, what we mean is we're trying to help build affordable housing that's available to people at or below 80% of the area's median income. There's rules around this. The Chapter 40B law wants us all to have like 10% of our housing to be permanently affordable to people at or below 80% of the area's median income. It's a hard thing to do. We don't have that much now. We're just under 7% of capital A affordable housing. That's deed restricted and pretty much permanent affordable housing. And we're always striving to build more. So if that's helpful. And then low income housing, to me, isn't really a term. It's a, it's sort of like a term that people use when they want to keep people out of housing that they can afford. The East Hampton Housing Authority works with folks who have very low incomes, and that's a quasi-public-private kind of partnership agency that the, it's not fully run by, it's not run by the city, it's controlled at the state level. And folks there typically have very low incomes. So sometimes people think about folks in the East Hampton Housing Authority properties as being sort of in low income housing. But that's also considered affordable with a capital A because it's all deed restricted. Does that all make sense to folks? It's complicated, which is why a lot of people don't like to talk about housing in these kind of ways, because it is, it's never an easy, an easy question to answer. So, yeah. All right. Shall we carry on? Do you want to ask your favorite question first?
Sure, sure. Along those lines, I guess, or I guess they're all related. For Dr. Tamara Smith, "There's been a lot of controversy surrounding large development in East Hampton. How will you work to bridge the gap between potential developers and the community to make sure everyone feels represented and heard?"
Well, I think anytime you have a large developer, you're going to have that equation of how much can we make while we're also creating a community. And one key to developers creating a community that's affordable is to make sure that new housing has different income levels in, that are invited to be part of the project. So what am I trying to say? People living there, they can afford it at different rates. And so that mixed income model is one way that moving forward, new development in East Hampton could be more equitable for people living here. Do I, do I have a certain amount of time this time, or am I just answering the question?
You were going to say like two-ish minutes, and we'll just kind of, we're not going to time it in the same way. But if people go too long, we will, we will say, okay, time to move on.
Okay. So that's one thing I would say from an affordable housing standpoint. And I think the other is also the responsibility of the people who live in the city is to show up at the meetings and to voice your opinion about all things local, including housing. I know there's been a lot of discussion, for example, of the Tasty Top location and what could and could not go in there. And I think those types of discussions that are started at the community level and brought to the forefront to be able to then be discussed through both housing and through city council really generates more discussion and more ideas that way. So I'm all open, I'm all for transparency and for mixed income housing. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jared Henkel, since you are running against Tamara for the same contested seat, would you like to answer the same question?
Oh, sorry.
"There's been a lot of controversy surrounding large development in East Hampton. How will you work to bridge the gap between these potential developers and the community to make sure everyone feels represented and heard?"
Well, again, you know, you have large developers coming in, they're going to be spending money, they're going to be paying taxes, which will increase the revenue for the town, which can help with the Affordable Housing Act. And maybe we can get with them to say, okay, you know, you have so many units at this level, you need to provide so many units for the, for the East Hampton Housing Authority. When it comes to affordable housing, there's no easy answer. There's no quick answer. We're not going to solve this within the next two years, 10 years. It's not going to happen. We just need to work with businesses and local governments, our communities, our surrounding communities especially. You know, we have, you know, Southampton right there, a lot of potential. You know, we have West Hampton, a lot of potential. You know, North Hampton is actually overflowing into the other Hamptons, you know, because they've ran out of space. They have, you know. So it's all coming to us right now. And we need to work with our surrounding communities to solve this problem, because when we get overburdened with affordable housing, it's just going to move to another community. So like I said before, we need to work with the developers, with the surrounding communities, with the state. Our local representatives need to go to the state and say, this is what our people want. This is what needs to happen. And if you can't do it, you're not going to get reelected. Because remember, the elected officials here work for the people of East Hampton. The elected officials up at Beacon Hill work for the Commonwealth citizens. And if they're not listening to us, then we need to get them out. And I believe as a local elected official, we need to go to Beacon Hill and say, this is what our community wants, because we want to make it better for us. And with housing, like I said, it's not an easy solution. Nothing in this world is an easy solution now. But again, we need to work with the businesses, you know, the developers, because they're the ones that are going to spend the money.
Okay, thank you.
So we wanted to make sure we gave the incumbents a chance to answer this, too. I'm sure that some of you have thoughts on this question. Do you want us to repeat the question again?
That'd be awesome.
That would be awesome. Okay. So "There's been a lot of controversy surrounding large development in East Hampton. How would you work to bridge the gap between developers and the community to make sure everyone feels represented and heard?" And since we repeated it, Tom, why don't you go first?
Sure. So at the point that a large developer comes in, it's generally not at the level that the city council is necessarily the one dealing with it, except for some very special circumstances where taxes get involved or things like that. It generally goes to the planning board, and depending on the nature of the project, maybe the conservation committee. I know that with the Sierra Vista, that that's a big thing. So I think that it's important to make sure that the people who are on those committees are people who are committed to having, you know, a good civil discourse, hearing people out, and hearing different perspectives, and then making informed decisions within the laws. What the council can do and has done is in terms of setting the guidelines for those. What, what becomes a special permit versus a plan approval versus a, something that you can do by right? Because that sort of depend, that, that modulates the level to which people's sort of feelings on these issues can, can be relevant. I think that it's important to say that at the end of the day, any really large development is going to have some degree of externality, right? Just having additional people, additional buildings, additional infrastructure. There's going to be environmental concerns, there's going to be traffic concerns, there's going to be services. And that doesn't mean that we shouldn't do those things, because there's, we badly need more housing, and particularly more of certain types of housing in the city. But I just think it's important to note, these are conversations that are going to come up when there's big developments. We need to be mature about them. We need to be thoughtful about how we have these things. And we need to recognize that we're never going to walk away from a big conversation like this without some people having not gotten exactly what they wanted. There's no way around that. We just need to be able to listen to people, respect what they have to say, attempt to reach a conclusion that people are happy with, and, and just know that we're not, not everybody is going to be happy. And just one last thing I'd want to say really quick, because I know I'm probably coming up on my time, is that one of the things that we can also do to, to limit the impact of, of big developments is try and find ways to make smaller developments more tenable and more likely. One of the things I passed in East Hampton was a thing making it very, very easy for you to build an accessory dwelling unit in your own house, so that maybe you can put one unit of affordable housing, at least small A affordable housing on your property. That hasn't been done a whole lot since it passed for reasons, so that's something I'd like to explore, is is there things that we could do to incentivize people to explore that as an option? So that, you know, I think a lot of little developments are maybe less impactful than one big one in terms of the externalities.
Great, thank you. Any other councilors want to answer the question?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor Riley.
Thank you. You know, in terms of, you know, this, this concept of, of bridge building, you know, I, I think I, I don't necessarily see this as bridge building per se as encouraging the community to stand their ground. So when a large development comes to a community like East Hampton, they already have all the leverage. They have millions of dollars, they have financial backers, they have institutions that back them. If a community does not stand up and say, this is the things that we believe in, these are the traits that we want in developments, this is the character and culture of our community. If you don't do that, then those large developments come in and they steamroll over the top of the community, and then you end up with a product that you don't like. So, you know, we have lots of mechanisms in place, and I think sometimes they are painted as stalling or, you know, evasive maneuvering, but require traffic studies to make sure. We can ask developers to do that work on our behalf. Because if, if a development comes in and we don't ask them to do a traffic study, we may end up with traffic that we don't like. If we have our environmentalists say, no, we need to check this first, even if the development still comes in, it at least says that this is our character trait. We believe in protecting the environment. We believe in housing that is actually affordable. You know, so I would encourage people to organize, to bargain, and to go through all of the processes that are available to you through the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. It is not stalling if the process has been put in place for you. These are things that are available to you as citizens, and you should be able to use them.
Thank you.
But what if it doesn't work?
Yeah.
What if everything goes nowhere?
So I think I'm going to see if Councilor Denham and Councilor Gomez would like to answer the question, and then we can see if we will.
We can ask developers to do that work on our behalf. Because if a development comes in and we don't ask them to do a traffic study, we may end up with traffic that we don't like. If we have our environmentalists say, "No, we need to check this first," even if the development still comes in, it at least says that this is our character trait, we believe in protecting the environment, we believe in housing that is actually affordable. You know, so I would encourage people to organize, to bargain, and to go through all of the processes that are available to you through the planning board and the zoning Board of Appeals. It is not stalling if the process has been put in place for you. These are things that are available to you as citizens, and you should be able to use them.
Thank you.
But what if it doesn't work? What if everything goes nowhere?
So, I think, I'm gonna see if Counselor Denham and Counselor Gomez would like to answer the question, and then we can see if we wanna circle back.
Yes, I have an answer from Owen.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
You sure?
I'm certain. I'm just ready. I'm ready.
Okay. First, I wanna say that I will change the word controversial to concern. I think we have three groups with a lot of concerns. We have a group that have a concern on not having any developer coming to the city and creating more tax revenue. We have another group that doesn't want any developer coming to our city, because they believe that we don't need anything else, right? And we have another one, another group that believe that, I think both are right, that we need developers, but with some restrictions. And I'm pretty sure that the middle ones are the correct one. Why? Because that group bring a lot of concerns. Which concerns? Traffic concerns. Today, if you travel North Hampton Street, it's a lot of traffic. You go to Union Street at 5:00 PM, it's a lot of traffic. Conservation. We have a lot of land that we had to protect for farms, for multiple reasons, contamination, we had to protect all that. But we have to be creative to create more housing too, because we need it. As a parent of three girls, they're looking for getting their own place to leave, we need to create those spaces for those, for that community, the young community, or the community of my age, the community of the age, the Council of Peak. I think that's why we need to be creative. We, as a councilor, we can create those guidance for the planning board to make the right decision for our community based on what Counselor Riley was explaining to everybody. I think we should review everything and put in the zoning ordinance. That way, developers, when they came to our city, they have some guidance, and the planning board can decide based on those guidance what to do the best for the city. Because at the end, what they have to choose and what to do is what is the best for the majority and everybody in the community, always thinking of the minorities. Because we need to help the minorities to move to East Hampton, to help them do something. And again, it's really important to establish that concerns are different than the other words that we'll be using.
Thanks. Counselor Denham.
Thank you. So, I don't wanna repeat anything that anyone has said. I think it's all right on. I think, when I think about my role as a city councilor, right, I believe that we have volunteers who serve on committees and commissions and et cetera, who are members of this community, who care very deeply about what's right for this community, and what's right for themselves, and what's right for their families. And I think that my role is to be able to give them that space, to be able to deliberate amongst themselves, to be able to explore those particular issues, and then to take their guidance and make ordinance changes or whatever, right? But I rely personally very heavily on those individuals who are very knowledgeable about the committee that they're on, and in this case, it might be housing or conservation, you know, et cetera. And so, as an elected official, I want to be able to give them the space to be able to have those conversations and rely on them for guidance as needed when I'm making a decision with others. The other thing that I believe very much in is neighborhood initiatives, right? I believe in development without displacement. I believe in the youth voice. I believe in neighborhood development, so having participation on the part of members of a particular neighborhood to be able to engage and to talk through and think about what's important to their particular neighborhood within greater East Hampton. And I also believe very much in resident empowerment, right? So, I want those residents to be able to come to meetings and things like that to be able to voice their opinions. I think a lot of people get nervous, I think a lot of people get scared, and I think that they aren't sure exactly how to participate. And so, I think a lot of what our role is, is providing that education and having them engage with different committees, encouraging them to participate, et cetera, in various meetings or public hearings and things of that nature, right? And so, those are the things that I personally believe in to be able to address those particular issues. And everyone was right, right? We need development within East Hampton, and that's the reality. As it's been mentioned, our tax basis is reliant on development and folks coming in. And so, you know, that's how I would work to bridge that gap.
Thank you. And I'll just read Counselor Owen Zaret's response to the question. So, his response is, "First and foremost, being available to listen and respond promptly. With a critical enough mass, a town hall-style session is feasible, just as I've already held a number of one-on-one conversations around current proposals."
Great. Thanks. Okay. So, I think we have a number of questions, we're not gonna be able to get to all of them. And I think some of them might be better served to, I know you all have a lot of concerns about a specific project, but we are gonna try and make this more of a broad conversation about housing. But we're gonna do our best to get to some things. The next question is, so, just for information for the audience and folks, every seven years, the City of East Hampton has to produce a housing production plan that looks at current available land, current housing stock, the composition of that housing stock, and looks at the need based on the demographics and what we have going on in terms of like, how much things cost, et cetera. So, every seven years, we produce one of those, and the city council approves it. So, based on that housing production plan, in the recommendations in the most recent one, what zoning changes might you consider to make building and rehabilitating housing easier? What kind of recommendations? And this might be best for folks who are currently on the council to start with. Anybody wanna take that on first? Counselor Peak.
I wanna take all of them.
I'm gonna also say that I'm running, we're running a timer, and once you get to two minutes, we're gonna show you the 30-second sign, just so that everyone has a chance.
One of the things that I remember being in that thing, that I'd be interested in looking at, is that the, right now, the actual land that you are required to have to build a two, three, or four-unit housing development is substantially larger than what's needed to build a one-unit housing development, to the point that a lot of the really beautiful duplexes and triplexes that you can see, if you're in Precinct Three or Precinct Two or some parts of Precinct Four, would not actually be legal to build today. And these, I think, are actually where a lot of the working-class and low-income members of our community actually can find housing, is in properties like this. And so, in terms of the actual land requirements for something like that, I have been exploring the possibility of substantially reducing the amount of land, basically making it the same for a duplex or triplex, maybe even a fourplex, as is required for a single-family house in that particular zone. The one thing that continues to trouble me through that is just, would that even be worth doing if a developer's just gonna put up the biggest McMansion they can find, because that's the most profitable thing they can do at that moment? So, that's sort of like, I'm playing with this issue, it's been something for a few months, I've been looking at some different ideas around, but that's one that just sprung to mind right away, is like, that would be pretty easy to implement. And I think, you know, we already have these sorts of structures in our community, many of them are very beautiful, so I don't think it should face a tremendous amount of pushback from anyone.
Great. Thanks. Other councilors wanna speak to that question? Counselor Riley?
Yeah. So, you know, it's funny to bring up the housing production plan, because when I started volunteering with the city, that was the first thing that I cut my teeth on at the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership. You know, and there was, there was one detail that stuck out to me, and I know that this is not just a simple fix, but something that needs to be done first off, is that our zoning ordinance document is 231 pages long. It's ridiculous how much information is in there. And we've found, even as I've been on the ordinance committee, that sometimes there are things in there that are either contradictory or overly complex that can stall projects in their, like, in their infancy to be able to, you know. So, we have to, at the very least, we need to go through that document and figure out, what does zoning need to look like in East Hampton, and completely renovate that entire document. So, the housing developments that, you know, Tom is talking about in Precinct Three, that's actually where I live. I've lived there for 11 years. And to give you an idea of what the housing looks like right in that area, so I lived on Hudson Street, and the quadplex that I lived in is in such poor disrepair that there are actual animals that live inside the buildings. And I'm not talking about mice, we're talking about squirrels. I had mourning doves walking through the gas lines to get into my apartment. I'm fortunate enough to be in a better financial situation than I moved into a neighboring quadplex that has been recently renovated. But I went, my rent increased almost $1,000 a month in order to live in a place that isn't like that. So, we have all of these housing units in this area that were built for low-income, blue-collar workers in East Hampton, and that's where a majority of them still live. But if you want to give them a building that doesn't have animals living in it, or windows that don't fit inside the walls, it means that only a private developer can come in and renovate it and bring it up to code. And then the only people that can afford to live in it are people that can afford to pay $2,000 a month for an apartment. So, you know, I think the last, just this last detail, so one of the things that we do right now with Chapter 40B and how we do zoning here, is that affordable housing units are done by a percentage of units. And I think another option to explore is looking at square footage percentage of developments for affordable housing. Something to explore. Thank you.
Thanks. Other councilors wanna speak to that question, or candidates?
Yes, I'd like to say one other thing. I know Counselor Peak brought up the single resident occupancy. And one of the challenges that we face in Precinct Five, I don't know if I would call it a challenge, but we have a lot more privately owned homes and not so many rental situations in terms of duplexes or anything like that. Another thing that's really interesting about the Plains is that we have large yards to accommodate less of a footprint because of the aquifer. But as time is going on, we're also starting to see increasing rates of intergenerational living. It's not very young children living with their grandparents, it's adult children who haven't left home because they can't afford to live home. And so, when I walk around my neighborhood, I see so many kids that graduated with my children, that are still in the neighborhood, still trying to save money to eventually get their own place, that really don't wanna be living with their parents. And anytime I think about that, I think about the SRO possibility, because that is one of the few footprints that we actually could do within the Plains that would allow for a little more development to happen in a responsible way, because we already have such large plots of land compared to a lot of other places in the city, that it's not the same privacy issue as if we were living right next door to each other. You know, the Plains is that neighborhood that's beyond the middle school. And for a lot of people, they tend to just say, "We're part of Southampton," but we're very much part of East Hampton. And our needs are a little different from the rest of the city, just because we are one of the largest developed housing, you know, neighborhoods within the city. But I just wanted to point out that we're unique, because we do have a lot more homeownership than renters out in that section. But it's also the one section of the city that I always see overlooked as a possibility of creating more housing, because it's just overlooked as, "Oh, that's full." So, I just wanted to bring that into the conversation as well.
Thanks. Can I ask a point of clarification, and then I'll have Jared Henkel answer that question? So, are you referring to accessory dwelling units, not SROs, which are single resident occupancy?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Sorry, I get the names wrong.
There's a lot of alphabet soup in the housing world, so accessory dwelling units is where you could plunk a little house down in your backyard for your mother and daughter.
That's what I meant, yes, sorry.
SROs, we do have one of, a couple of those in town too, where it's a big building with multiple single residents.
No, that's not what I meant. Apologies.
I just wanted to clarify. That's what I assumed. All right. Jared, do you wanna answer that same question?
Yeah. Again, you know, I live in Precinct Five, same place as Tamara and all that stuff, and we do have, you know, large yards, you know? And we, like we said before, we do have an aging population, you know, that they don't wanna leave East Hampton, they really can't afford to leave East Hampton, because if they sell their house, where are they gonna get a place for what they sold it for? I think allowing the, everybody's heard him on the news, TV, tiny homes, you know, for that aging population. It's like, my wife and I are 44, all right? Our youngest is 15. When he moves out, we got a four-bedroom house, you know? What are we gonna do with all that room? You know? And it might be a good idea to allow those tiny homes or single, you know, where we don't need all that space, and then we can rent out the house for low-income people that need a helping hand. We can, you know, if our oldest daughter, you know, ever gets married and has kids and wants to stay in the area, you know, can take over our house, and we can be right there in a tiny home, you know? Because there are some yards in Precinct Five that it's like, man, I know my yard, it's like, I kinda have a hard enough time keeping up with it, you know? So, I mean, maybe we can look at that for allowing the tiny homes or single dwelling homes on a particular size of land that, you know, if, you know, like, my wife and I, you know, when we get, you know, 20 years down the road, we wanna say, you know, "We don't wanna take care of this big house anymore, we can rent it out, but we still wanna stay in East Hampton, we can still be in East Hampton, and still have our property, and still enjoy it."
Counselor Gomez?
Really quick. The question was, if we're gonna review or change some zoning ordinance?
Yeah.
We already did.
Yep.
And we're gonna see, probably, if there's a potential, that we can do the same in the future. We did it with the 40R, we did it with the ordinance that Counselor Peak was talking, and without, and this is the important part, is without affecting other zoning, especially the farms, especially all the zoning that is really important for the community to keep the character of our city. But the question was that. I think that the quick answer is, we already did. And when they have the opportunity without affecting anything else, probably we're gonna keep changing some ordinance too.
Thanks. Okay. So, do you wanna do the next question?
Yeah, sure.
I guess I'll start over with the Precinct Five candidates. There has been a lot of concern over too much growth in East Hampton. What do you think? How will you communicate the data on this issue, speaking to the changing housing needs and housing makeup in our community? And I'll start with Jared.
Okay. Now, my question is, what is too much growth? What does the community want? Do they wanna grow? Do they wanna be the size of Chicopee? Or do we wanna keep East Hampton the way it is? That's where the residents come into play. It's what they want. You know, there's, you know, when it comes to growth, everybody wants to grow, everybody wants to, you know, be more modern and everything else. But there's a reason why people chose to leave, live in East Hampton and not Chicopee, not, you know, Westfield, you know? We like the small community feeling, you know? If the people wanna grow, then the people need to say, "Oh, let's grow," you know? It's like, one thing I like is, you know, we have, we have everything that we need here. We have a nice little grocery store on the corner there, you know, you can get everything you need there. If you need to go to a bigger grocery store, Big Y's right down the road, less than two minutes away, you know? Walmart's in Westfield, Walmart's in North Hampton. But I think when people move here, they don't want the growth to go too fast, you know? A little bit of growth is good, but too much growth, I think will just take what East Hampton is away.
Thanks.
Tamara, same question? Do you need me to repeat it? Do you need me to repeat it?
If you can repeat it, thank you.
Sure. Uh, there has been a lot of concern over too much growth in East Hampton. What do you think? How will you work to communicate the data on this issue, speaking to the changing housing needs and household makeup in our community?
So, I suppose you can look at growth from a population issue or from a business issue. And one of the things that really, um, astounds me about East Hampton is how even the population has been over the past several years. We're not expanding really rapidly. Um, and the few times, such as the, um, if you know, you know, the 2004 cohort of children in East Hampton, which was much larger, one of my children was in that cohort. And the reason that I bring this up is when you have rapid growth, and in this case, it was only a one-year cohort, that create a lot of chaos throughout their entire education system. Every single year that my child was at, was a concern as to whether or not we would have enough paraprofessionals to deal with all of the emotional, social needs of the children. So when I think about, what kind of growth do we want? Well, the first one I think about from, uh, sustainability as a community, we can't grow forever. Uh, we just can't. We don't have the space to do that and, and we don't want to do that. We are going to see more growth with the youth in our city, no doubt, just because we have new schools. And I hope that as we see that growth develop, that we see a lot of advocacy for our public schools in the city because that, they will really need a lot of that, um, extra advocacy and funds. When it comes to businesses in the city, I know a lot of our business growth has been because we have such an excellent, um, uh, credit rating as, as a city. And when we look at the tax rates that we offer to businesses coming in, they're very competitive. And I've worked in cities in the area that don't have that same competitive tax rate. And it's really devastating when you see a city center suddenly have everything leave. And so I'm really happy that we're starting to see a lot more businesses filling in in downtown East Hampton. I would love to see that continue to grow. I'm proud that when I was a pre- previous, I used to be a city councillor at large. And one of the things that, while I was on ordinance that we passed, was a restriction in the amount of, of square footage that buildings could be in the city of East Hampton. And that was a real attempt to try to limit rapid growth in a way that we would suddenly turn around and find our entire city very different in the way it looked. So I think it's really important to look at all different sections of the city and the unique needs of what are in within each of the precincts, both from a population and from a business and sustainability perspective.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and just before the other councilors go, because I forgot, um, on the last question, I'm going to read Counselors Errett's response. Being a vocal advocate and learning the existing material to the best of my knowledge, connecting with relevant stakeholders to better inform myself, as well as to obtain a list of resources for constituents with questions that I cannot readily answer.
Okay. Do you want to hear the question again, councilors?
I'm, I'm good, but I can be very brief, but I'll, if you, others want to hear the question again, go for it.
Oh, Councilor Riley, you want to go first and then we'll?
Sure.
If other folks need a repeat, we'll go there.
Yeah, so I'll just, I'll just say really quickly, you know, yes, there has been a ton of growth in East Hampton. But East Hampton is not the only community where that's happening. Um, you know, we've had so many massive federal spend, uh, spending bills that have come up in the last few years. So, you know, there are infrastructure projects and developments that are ready to be, you know, put the shovels in the ground and go now. And there, there are provisions in these spending bills that say, if you don't use it within a certain amount of time, it gets clawed back. So, yeah, there's a lot of growth happening right now, but it's one of those truly once-in-a-lifetime opportunities that if you don't do the growth now, you lose access to that money. The other thing that, you know, I think compounds that is, we basically had marijuana be our primary export, and that has been a massive economic, uh, boom for, uh, the entire community. So you have all of this revenue from cannabis, you have all of these people coming into our community, and it's caused a chain reaction for the better. Um, but there's a lot happening right now. I think our goal as a community is to let the rest of these projects finish out and then start to focus on the sustainability stuff. What, um, Tamra said is correct. We can only grow so much more. So, you know, I think now that we've got all of these new things updated, we need to switch to the phase of, now what do we do to sustain what we have?
Thanks.
I'm going to answer. Um, I think that, to the points that were made, you know, the difference between Chicopee or Southampton and things like that, we have a very finite amount of space, right? So all we can do is really grow up. We can't really grow out, right? And so that's our biggest challenge, right? And so we have to be very, um, intentional about the choices that we make in regards to, you know, development. But I also think that there's something that to be said about affordability, right? That you can work towards without thinking about development and, and whatnot, right? So things like the, uh, the senior tax write-off, you know, program, I think that's a really important way to help people, uh, stay within their community that doesn't necessarily mean now that we're losing land, right? I would like for us to be really creative in thinking about how, what are the ways, what are the initiatives that we can create to help seniors, uh, stay in their homes while also creating, uh, rental spaces, right? And so how do you, are there programs out there that, uh, connect renters with, uh, seniors so that renters have space and seniors have, uh, company? Uh, seniors have someone who are able to kind of take care of their land, you know, take care of the property, et cetera? And so, and that's a very simplistic way of thinking about that, right? But I think that we have to think about, how do we kind of increase the revenue within the community because we, we don't have a lot of space for development, right? And so I think we need to start becoming more creative in terms of how we think about increasing our tax base, uh, making sure that, um, people aren't pushed out of their homes, right? Uh, making sure that rent is affordable. Um, and so I think, we just, we really need to start thinking more creatively about the solutions and not always relying on development, development, development.
Thanks. Counselor Gomez? Counselor Peak?
Sure. Um, I feel like I am struggling with this question a little bit because I need to better understand what is meant by growth, because the population has not grown. Some people have left and other people have come in. Uh, I was talking to someone who, uh, works in how, uh, home construction a little while back, and they were saying that they were, they were joking around because their son had graduated from high school recently. And, uh, this guy graduated from high school, I don't know, maybe 40 years earlier, 30, 34 years earlier. And he was saying, you know, when I was, uh, when I graduated, I had a much better, bigger class than my son did. And I've been building homes in East Hampton this entire time, and yet there's less kids in the school, so what's up with that? We are, we have an aging population. Aging populations often, as, as Jared pointed out, the sort of, you often have people where a single-family home that might have once housed two, four to six people now houses one or two people. And so you need more housing units per person to house the population. And that's a tricky thing to figure out what to do with while simultaneously honoring people's desires to stay in their homes. And there's ideas that have come up about how you might deal with that. But in terms of population growth, there has not been growth. There has been turnover. And the people who are here might, in some cases, be different, and they might be substantially more affluent. But there hasn't been a growth in the population, there just hasn't. Uh, there has been a thing where we had an enormous amount of industrial and commercial space that, in the 90s, when the factories closed, became vacant, and that now has been redeveloped and reused, which has substantially, uh, grown, uh, the occupancy of our non-residential space. And that too does come with some growing pains, but, um, and we need to be smart about when we build new stuff, whether it's residential or non-residential, we need to be smart about what land, what areas, yeah, uh, we need to, we really, really need to preserve versus what things we would be okay building some stuff on, because, but we, that, that's sort of a, a separate conversation, but in terms of, uh, our population, it has not grown.
Thanks. Counselor Gomez?
Really quick. I concur with everything what Councilor Peak said. We have, we, we have less population, we have less kids in schools. So growth, what growth we are talking about, that we have probably more units for living in East Hampton, yes. We have, uh, Parson Village, that I think is like 15 years old. We have 330 Street, that we have no apartments there, yes. But it didn't look like we were growing because East Hampton is a popular place. People want to come to East Hampton. People want to go to Cottage Street and on Thursdays and Fridays to go to Kizara, Amy's, Sevens, you name it. People are coming to go to Insa, people are coming to, to go to different places, right? And that's why it looked like we were growing. But in reality, we are not. What we have is people like M.I.G., that we, we used to have five people in a, in a house, it's only now two. So we have less people in our community. And we should create a way to bring more people to our community because we need it, especially the, with the amount of money we're spending in schools.
Thanks. Okay. I think we have time for one final question.
All right.
Sound good? Do you have a favorite you want to ask?
Yeah, I mean, to go off of that, um, and I think this also sort of encompasses some of the questions, uh, that we weren't able to get to from the audience, both online and in person. So, starting with Counselor Riley, um, how do you imagine smart growth in East Hampton?
Um, yeah, I mean, look, I think, you know, one of the things that we need to do for smart growth is we need to centralize and re-centralize a lot of our facilities. So, you know, an example of this, um, you know, I, I did just touch on, on the dispensaries. We have a lot of dispensaries in town, but our post office is almost in another community. And, you know, so if we want to have smart growth that reimagines, uh, transportation, we can't have people driving all the way out to the other side of the community if they just want to bring something to the post office. In virtually every other community in the United States, a post office is centrally located. Um, you know, I think the other thing is, you know, a way that we take climate change into consideration is that we should start exploring things like, um, how to utilize increases in rain for rain gardens, um, rooftop gardens, things like that. Um, and to, honestly, we need to start lobbying PVTA to have a transportation system that actually makes sense. Um, it doesn't actually serve anybody's purposes in Western Massachusetts. And if we want to have smart growth where we have a vibrant, walkable downtown area, then part of that means that we need transportation that makes sense. And if we have folks that are coming in from, you know, Holyoke and Northampton and Amherst, you know, they could realistically take a, a bus into the community like most other well-developed areas. But if you want to do that, it's like a two-and-a-half hour drive on the bus to get from like Amherst into East Hampton. So the alternative is that you get in a car, you drive, and then we have all of our streets that are congested with cars. And it's not because anybody's done anything wrong. New England communities have streets that weren't meant for cars, they were meant for horses. So, you know, when you drive two cars down a lane, there's not much room for people to walk. So these are just some of the things that we need to take into consideration.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Denham?
Um, yeah, thanks. So, again, I think, I think it's a growth, you know, what are we talking? We talking about revenue, or we talking about more people, or we talking about development, right? So I think there's all these different ways that you can explore the, the idea of growth, right? I think some of the development that we've seen downtown and, and some of the, the options that are being, um, thought of around, you know, businesses on lower levels, housing on the upper levels, I think those are really, um, intentional ways of being able to, um, uh, make, put more use in a smaller space for both living and, and work. I think those are really great ideas. And I think that when you think about, again, climate change, et cetera, and you have people coming in, in need of space because everybody loves East Hampton and wants to be here, right? We have to be thinking about those particular things. Um, you know, transportation, as Counselor Riley, uh, had mentioned, I, I think that is very important. One of the things I've been in conversation with President Gomez and, and Mayor LaChapelle is actually getting a electric trolley kind of system to be able to move people around the, the community more efficiently. Um, I don't, I don't think we necessarily do that particularly well, and I think that that actually impedes some of our ability to, um, support local business, um, as well as just make, um, uh, East Hampton an easier place for other communities to come and visit, right? So I think those are things that we need to think about when, when we think about smart growth and, and whatnot. I also, again, I think it's about, how do you, and I mentioned this just a minute ago, right? Like, we have these homes that have, we used to have larger families and smaller, like, how do we help community members in those homes reimagine what, what their dwellings can look like? And I think that those are some of the things that are going to allow for growth, right? Uh, to support the schools, uh, to support local business, um, and, you know, pull more people into the community without, you know, developing outward and using up more valuable land space for agriculture and, and conservation, et cetera. And so I think those are some of the things that, that I think about.
Thank you. Um, and just to be, uh, wary of time, I want to make sure we get to the city councillor or the candidates that are contesting a seat.
You can go now.
Yeah. Uh, Jared, would you like to answer the question?
That was clever.
All right. Smart growth. It's kind of a broad thing. It reminds me of the old, uh, oxymoron in the military called military intelligence. Um, anybody that was in the military understands that. If not, it's, um, when it comes to smart growth, you, you can either do it the right way, you could do it the wrong way, you could go right down the middle. It, it, it just depends on what happens, you know? Again, it's what the community wants. It's, you know, do you, you know, how we've gotten with the PVTA is say, hey, you know, we need some more bus stops. This is what, this is our, this is what we got down, you know, downtown. I know in Precinct 5, you can't catch a bus to save your life. My kids actually ride their bikes downtown or walk downtown, or we drop them off downtown. Can't take a bus from Precinct 5 anywhere. There's no bus, there's no bus stops. Um, you know, and that's the thing, it's like, did we get with PVTA and say, hey, is there any way we can do this? I understand they're a federally funded company, which have certain restrictions, and they have to hereby the federal funding and all that stuff, and maybe there's not enough need for bus stops in Precinct 5 to take, you know, to take people from Precinct 5 to downtown. You know? I know in Westfield, they have a centralized, uh, PVTA, uh, bus location. You know, I mean, that's one thing to look into. You know, it's just, when it comes to smart growth, it's, it just depends on, you know, what you want to happen, you know? Do you want to keep East Hampton the way it is? Do you want it to grow financially? Do you want the population to grow? You know, it just depends on what you want, you know? And that's what the voters are for, so.
Thanks.
Thank you. Tamra?
Okay. Uh, when I think about smart growth in East Hampton, um, like everyone said, there are some different ways we can look at it. We can look at economic growth, we can look at population growth, um, we can look at business growth. I guess the thing that I would really want to see as we grow is a real understanding that our community is becoming more diverse and we have a lot of intergenerational issues that are going on. So as we're moving forward, we often, we often tend to separate older people and younger people, as if older people don't have the same vision as younger people. But as someone who's a gerontologist, most of the time, older people in a community really want to see the younger people in that community thrive. So it would be really important- So it'd be really important for me, in smart growth, to make sure, that yes, we need to make sure that we're bringing our children who live in East Hampton to East Hampton Public Schools whenever we can. I know that we have to spend money to send our children to charter or to school choice. And in some cases, our district can't, can't meet the child's needs, so we, we bust them. I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about families that never come into East Hampton Public Schools. So when it comes to smart growth, I would also want to make sure that we're encouraging people to look inside our schools, to really talk about what it would be like to grow up in East Hampton, but also, future growth really needs to also focus on the aging population in East Hampton. While we have, you know, we do have Valley Medical Group in East Hampton, but we have very few services that are really speaking to allowing a person to remain independent within their home and mobile within the community. So smart growth for me would be anticipating those aging needs, anticipating some of the changes that need to occur in people's homes to make them be able to stay there, both in the modifications that that home could bring, and also revisioning what someone's entire living space may be like, and consider some of the options that we've brought up tonight, such as, and I won't call it SRO, of the, of single dwelling, I'm saying it again, wrong again, Jackie?
Accessory dwelling unit.
Thank you, accessory dwelling units. I was part of that ordinance, I don't know why that just went, but anyway. I really think that when we look at smart growth, for me, smart growth means looking across the entire life course and looking at the entire age distribution and meeting the needs not only of the older community or the younger community, but across the entire age spectrum.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Do you think, I think we're out of time.
Yeah, I think we're out of time.
I have a question though for the councillors. So current councillors, there were definitely questions here that didn't get answered, and I didn't know if you wanted to spend some time circulating. Well, I think the program itself is over, but if folks still want to have their questions answered by a specific councillor, would you be available to do that?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. And thanks, everyone, for being here in the room, online.
Yeah, thank you so much.